Okay, I'd like to call this special meeting in the town council to order. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Announcements. Upcoming town council meetings, we're meeting on the 10th of February as a regular meeting here, which will include public hearings for the operating budget and other pieces, parts for the upcoming town election, moving to the warrant, etc. Thursday, February 24th will be a regular meeting and then Wednesday, February 23rd is the filing period for through, February 23rd, Wednesday, through Friday, March 4th at 5:00 PM, is the filing period for town offices to be elected at town meeting on April 12th. So if you're looking to run for any of town offices, those dates are important. The 23rd of February through the 4th of March. Wednesday, March 9th at 7:00 PM in the All Purpose Room at James Mastrocola Upper Elementary School, located at 26 Babusik Lake Road, will be the deliberative session, which is the first part of our two-session annual meeting. Which is all I have. Paul, do you have any other announcements?
Yeah, I have one announcement, Mr. Chairman. The New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services actually got in contact with Pat Murphy, our welfare coordinator, to see if the town would be interested in running one more COVID vaccination clinic. And Pat brought that to me and I said, "Without a doubt, sure, we're game." And so she worked with the state and we do have another one coming up. It's Wednesday, February 16th from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. Pat, Pat will be doing appointments and scheduling. So you can call the direct line at (603) 420-1440, or you can email welfare@marimacknh.gov and get an appointment for February 16th. They will also be coming back for, if needed, a follow-up clinic on March 16th for follow-up shots. And basically, it is their doses, booster doses, first doses, anybody five and older for a first dose, the whole gamut. So the state will be prepared to have vaccination for anybody who has not yet got their vaccination and would like it, or needs their second or third shot.
What's the time again, February 16th?
1:00 to 5:00 PM.
And is that being held at the O'Leary?
John O'Leary Center, yes. And then on March 16th would be 1:00 to 4:00 PM. If, if needed with follow-up shots.
So if you haven't gotten any shots, you need to do the February 16th to get your first one?
Correct.
And then follow up on the 16th?
Correct.
Okay. Is that it?
That's all I have, thank you.
Awesome. We have a slot here for comments from the press and public, but we have no press or public here. So unless somebody's running down the hall, which it doesn't sound like. Brings us to new business. Number one is review of revenue submitted by Town Manager Paul McCauley. Town Council to review the revenues as presented as part of the 2022-23 operating budget.
Can I let me touch these things a little? It's pretty wide.
Pretty wide.
Is that that big L again?
Is that your pet?
That's my pet, that's my pet out here. See, I'm thinking it's already February 4th, so. Today is February 3rd that I'm presenting. And basically, this is a continuation of the cable franchise fees discussion that we had at the last meeting. For recap, this is the media fund if we transferred $250,000 to the... Hold on a sec.
So we don't have to crane our necks to see what you're putting up on them?
See, I'm a, I'm a day early, so. But this is, this is the, what we talked about with right now in the budget. There's a $250,000 transfer from the media fund, cable franchise fees to the general fund. And if that ran out, as you'll see, in 2022-23, the fund balance in the media fund would be a deficit of, projected of about $42,000. And we really can't have a deficit in the media fund fund balance because that $41,000 or $42,000 would then have to be covered through the general fund or tax dollars. So the town council asked me to come up with some solutions. So I went to my department heads and talked to my department heads. And as you'll see, the first line says cable franchise fees going to the general fund, $250,000. We talked about increasing building permits. It appears that we're roughly about 35% below the area in our building permit fees. So we can increase those and get $35,000 worth of income from that. We can increase our licensing fees to the state per our ordinance. We're supposed to be charging what the state charges for restaurant fees and licenses. And that would give us, garner us $12,000. Current use, we have a couple of projects going on right now. And we, talking to Lauren Martin, she feels that $125,000 is, is okay for current use, adding additionally $125,000 to the current use revenue for next year. We just didn't know if it was going to come to fruition before July 1st. But the way the project has been moving so far, she feels that it's not going to be coming to fruition anytime in the near future. And July 1st billing for that project would work. So that would be an extra $125,000 revenue there. Ambulance revenue, just by increasing Medicare, increase their rates by 5%. So just by increasing our rates by 5% on Medicare, it's $65,000 of additional revenue in our ambulance fund fees.
And that's allowed by Medicare?
And that's allowed by Medicare, yes.
Below what we're doing now?
Well, that's the five, that's, Medicare raised their rates 5%. We do Medicare plus 50. So by raising their rates 5%, our revenues go up 5% because we're, we, our rates are tied to the Medicare rates. So that would be $65,000 there. Leaving a balance of about $13,000 that we'd have to use from the cable franchise fees this year to help the general fund. Honestly, I probably can find that $13,000 knowing that revenues aren't due until September. There's rumors that they're going to raise the interest rates three times this year. March is supposed to be the first time. If that comes to fruition, we'll be getting more interest on our money. So that $13,000 I could see in interest income, especially if they're looking at what, a March, a June, and a September or something interest rate increase. So we should be able to garner that $13,000. So by removing the $250,000 of cable franchise to the general fund, we are, it's not going to affect the tax rate. Because we found other revenues that we can come up with, with, to offset that $250,000.
Building permits were 35% below what surrounding communities get?
That is what Chief DeFranzold told me, yes.
And how, I don't need a crash course tonight because this is short, what could be a short meeting, could be elongated if I go too much, but I, what does a building permit cost for a house, I guess?
I don't have those off the top of my head, but if, if this is something, we'd have to come in front of the council to approve the new rates. So we'd have a presentation for the town council to approve the new building, the building rates for electric, plumbing, and, and square footage for foundations and things of that sort. So it's costing us more money to inspect these, these properties.
Why?
Because of the amount of building that's occurring. We had to bring a part-timer in to help with all the new construction that we had, so, on the fee. So, but there will be a full presentation on the 35% increase in building permits moving forward. Because the town council sets the fee.
Sure.
So we'd have to come in front of you to get that approved.
And have you gotten to the page, rev, option two? You're not at option two?
I'm not at option two yet, I'm just at option one.
All right, sorry.
Option two is more for discussion purposes.
Nope, great. Well, that's where I think discussion should occur, in my estimation, but, so, go ahead, I'm sorry, Paul.
Can you go over the current use?
Okay. So we have a project that we thought was going to come to fruition in this fiscal year, meaning between now and June. It doesn't look like it's coming to fruition in this fiscal year. So right now, current use sits at $1 million in the conservation fund, Fund 53. 100% of current use then goes to the town of Merrimack.
Do you, are you familiar with current use?
Okay. There's been a lot of talk on the Conservation Commission about it.
I think it's just the piece that you're saying you thought it was going to happen this fiscal year. Now you're saying it's going, the project is going to push in next fiscal year.
Right.
So the funds from, taking that out of current use will be revenue in this budget that we're discussing.
In this budget that we're discussing.
That's the piece I was missing, so, thank you.
Yes, that, that's what's happening, is that it's a three-tiered project. And they haven't even completed the fir, they, they got their approvals from the planning board, but they haven't completed the first tier on the outside. There's something that the owners have to do. And then, one, we thought it was already going to happen, but since it hasn't happened, we feel that July 1st is, is more accurate timeframe for the project.
Thank you.
Okay? Everybody good with this slide so far? All right. So I want to bring this up for discussion purposes. The franchise fees right now are at 3.75%. We could talk about increasing the franchise fees, a quarter percent, a half a percent, 0.75%, all the way up to 5%. So I just said if we go and increase the franchise fees to four and a half percent, we're allowed by contract to increase the, increase or decrease the franchise fees once a year. And if we did that, that would increase the revenue by $51,000 based on the current amounts that we get for franchise fees. I looked at a lot of the communities surrounding us. And there are a wide range of birth of who charges what. But most of them are, the average is 3.99%. So that's an avenue that if the council's interested in, we can bring that forward and talk about that a little bit more as well. One of the reasons why we, we like the 3.75 was that it met our operating budget needs. 3.75 right now will still meet our operating budget needs. But there is a lot more competition for Comcast than there was when we set this agreement three years ago. We have Consolidated Communications who have run fiber throughout the whole town of Merrimack, almost. And they're starting to roll that out. And if the cord cutters are people who are thinking about cutting the cord from Comcast, that is an opportunity for them to do it because you can get some significant megabyte service. I think you get one gig service and it's unilateral, meaning it's direct one gig. So you're not at the end of the line and you might get one gig or not. It's guaranteed one gig, upload and download, that Comcast is, is saying right now. So there's competition there for Comcast as well. Remember, we only get the franchise fee on the cable portion of this. The TV portion. They raise their rates, we get, it's 3.75 on whatever they charge. There is a senior discount in the contract. There is a basic cable that we told them that they have to offer. Meaning it's local channels and maybe one or two other channels, like Weather Channel or, 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 you know, TNT or TBS or some local channel, some, some basic package for, for people that they can at least get that on. So if they need cable at the local stations, they can still get that. But if we, like I said, if we increase our franchise fees just, just a half a percent, it's $51,000 based on the numbers that we have at the current time of what we've been receiving. The second item for discussion is increase ambulance billing rate for Medicare plus 75 instead of Medicare plus 50. This would increase the estimated revenues of an additional $155,000, more than the $65,000 that's already in there. So technically, if we raise it by, to 75%, it'd be about $210,000 of additional revenue. And what I did there is I looked at, last year we billed, gross billed $1.6 million, roughly. There was contractual write-offs of 500,000, around $550,000. It was roughly a million dollars of, of net billing. Of that, ComStar collected around $800,000 of that million dollars. They sent their remaining $209,000 to the town. And I estimated that the town collected about $100,000 of that money through the court system or sending out additional billing requests to, to the individuals. Let me explain what we do with our billing service right now. So we send all our ambulance runs to ComStar. And ComStar is our third-party biller. And they ask us what we want for our rates. We could have Medicare, we could have Medicare plus 50, which we have. We can have Medicare plus 200 to 300. There's a community that is just north of us, northwest of us, I should say. They're averaging between 275, 200, Medicare plus 275% to Medicare plus 300%. So they, there are people out there that bill. What happens is, is that Medicare patients still would really not see an increase if we go up to the 75%. Because Medicare patients, I found out today, is that there's a 20% like cost share that they have to come up with. And that's based on the Medicare rate. So Medicare has, say, a $400 whatever billing premium for a service. And it's 20% of the 400. There's a write-off amount for that 400 to the town. Those are the contractual write-offs, that $565,000 that I talked about a little earlier, that, from our gross billing to our net billing. So there's that, going to still be that contractual write-off amount. The 20%, they're still going to not see a change because it's 20% of the Medicare rate. So because the Medicare rate went up, they will see a little bit of an increase. But they're not going to see, if we go to 75, Medicare plus 75, we can't balance bill them. So say it was a $1,000 bill and Medicare was 400. They get a, their 20% charge, we'll say it's $100 is what Medicare says that they're responsible for. That's all they're going to see. They're not going to see, and we got to write off the $500. They're not going to see the balanced billing of the 400 plus the 100, plus the 400 to come up with a thousand, or 500 to come up with a thousand. So the Medicare patients are not going to see an increase if we go to this 75%. The people who are going to see this increase are the insurance companies and people who have deductibles. Now, if they have a deductible, they'll hit their deductible a little quicker, or whatever their deductible might be, and they would have to pay the deductible. But if somebody's going on an ambulance run from the town of Merrimack to an emergency room, depending on their deductible, it's probably pretty much met by that emergency room visit, for the most part. Depending on what, what their insurance is. If it's an 80/20 coinsurance, it might be different. But if it's a straight $1,000 deductible, it could be met in the ER and the billing, ambulance billing. So that, the insurance company would pick up everything on top of that. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a discussion to get, thinking about it. I know we've talked about increasing ambulance rates. This is something that the fire chief has brought to me. And in a meeting, basically, has asked, is this something that you would think about? Is this something you think the council would consider? That's why I'm putting it as kind of an option two. It's something that he would do before we spend a lot of time finding out all the information. If it's something that the council's willing to listen and hear, I should say, not willing to listen, you're always willing to listen, but will, wanting to hear about. We'd bring you forward with, he would bring a presentation forward and explain exactly what this would mean by going up from Medicare plus 50 to Medicare plus 75. And that would be an additional $155,000 worth of income into the town. But once again, revenues aren't due, we don't have to put our revenue numbers in place until September, when we do our MS 434, which is our revenue portion of the budget.
Do we know?
Do we know what other towns do? I know you mentioned one that was 27% over. Do we know other towns?
We were told we are the lowest. Most of them are, on average, 125 to 200%. And we'll get you, we'll get, what I asked for is anybody who kind of touches us, except for the cities, because those are private, private companies that do it. But like Goffstown, Amherst, Bedford, Litchfield, Hudson.
But even they charge?
Yes.
The Medicare plus whatever percent?
Oh, oh, the private, but they, they're up there. They're, 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 they're not charging 100%. They're charging multiple hundred percents above Medicare. There, there are a lot of different avenues we can go around. And there are, there are avenues where if people can't afford their insurance bill, we go out of our way here in Merrimack to ask them, give us an abatement form. Give us your abatement form, give us your abatement form, give us your income, give us your tax return. Show us where your avenues are, show us where your income's coming in, show us your expenses. And we give that to welfare, our welfare minister, Pat Murphy. And Pat Murphy looks at it and says, this person can afford the bill, this person can't afford the bill, this is how much this person can afford, this is how much this person can't afford. And the only thing that we go after if Pat Murphy says they can't afford the bill is if we had to bring the person to court to get this information. Because we are filing a $90 fee to have them come to court to give us this information most of the time. So they would have to pay that court filing fee. If we do go to court and they don't come forward with it, we give them every opportunity, once we get a judgment of, from the court system, we go every opportunity for them to pay us. If they don't pay us or set up a payment plan, because we accept payment plans too. There's interest on the payment plans, we don't do interest-free, but there's a small amount of interest. So what happens is we'll charge them this and we'll go forward with it. If they do not make any payments or set up this fee, this payment plan, we bring them back to court for periodic payments. We get a ruling for periodic payments by the judge. And the judge sets the amounts that they're supposed to be paying now, not the town. If, at any point during this whole process, if something happens where they, they bring in their information about, I can't afford it, here's my abatement form, we go back and we, we would, we'd still abate. It isn't, hey, wait, we got a ruling, we got periodic payments, we got a bench order, whatever. If they bring something in, say that we can't afford it, we still look at that documentation, send it to Pat. And if Pat makes a determination that this person cannot afford the, the ambulance bill, we abate it and tell the court, we're settled. They just have to pay us the court filing fees. The other thing is, is that if the recipient of the ambulance ride passes away, it doesn't have to be passed away from that trip. If we find that they pass away six, eight, a year later, and they have an outstanding ambulance bill with the town, we don't go after their estate. We verify through the obituaries that the person died and we, we, we don't go after the estate. Where legally we could, but we don't. We say, okay, and we write those balances off too. So it isn't like we're just trying to do a money grab here. We try to work with the citizens of Merrimack and we try to, to try to resolve issues that, that come up. And we really go outside of our, outside to help these people come. And of course, we have some frequent flyers that take the ambulance a lot. And, you know, we understand that and we, we work with them as well. But we want to pay, we want to get paid for, for our services. And the other thing is I will have the, if this is something that you want to hear, I'll have the fire department break out, the fire chief break out on the ambulance runs in Merrimack residents versus non-Merrimack residents. And we, that's easy enough because we could tell by address, home address. So we, we're, we're looking at breaking that out as well for Merrimack residents, non-Merrimack residents, for who's, who's using the ambulance service. Barbara?
So for the ambulance calls that they do, particularly in the evening and at night, they call, I think they're called assist calls. How do those get billed out? Because they're not really taking a ride.
They don't take a ride, we don't bill them.
Okay.
So if we have to do a lift assist, we don't bill.
Okay.
If we go there and refuse transport, we can't bill. Even if we give the person an IV, if they're a diabetic and we give them an IV, we can't bill them. If they refuse the ride, we cannot bill, we don't bill. There, there is legislation that says we can bill, but right now we do not bill. That's something we could also discuss.
I have a lot of work to figure this out because I did receive about 10 months ago a call from a Nashville firefighter who lives in our town, who had to take an ambulance ride. And he was pretty wound tight as a spring because from what he claimed in Nashville, they will, they will accept certain medical insurance company rates. And we don't do that in Merrimack. And subsequently, his bill, I don't remember the number, but it was extremely high, I do recall that. So I can't imagine, if you're Medicare plus 200%, how anybody affords a ride. But.
Some towns do have contracts with Anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield, town of Merrimack does not. Because if that's the case, they would set the rate, ambulance rate for the town of Merrimack and it would not be in favor of the town of Merrimack. It would be in favor of their pockets.
I recognize that. My, my, my difficulty is becoming so reliant upon the $250,000. That's created a dilemma that I thought, I anticipated a few years ago in my head, but continued to work the numbers the way we did and was with everybody on that. It's not like I wasn't. But, but these increases absolutely have pretty direct impacts and pretty good ones as well, which, you know, all these other fees that are going up. So I, between now and when we have to decide this, I have to come up with my, what I think is best. Because right now, I don't know.
And, and that's why it's option two. I'm not suggesting this right now, we're going to go and implement this tomorrow. It's something I know that the council needs to, to, you know, get more information, more than what I'm giving right now. The other thing I want to do say is that, that $65,000 that I, I mentioned in option one, that is just based on the 5% Medicare increase and our increased calls that we are seeing for ambulance. Right now, in the month of January, I don't know why, it, we've been going crazy. The ambulance is going crazy. And several departments, we were at a department head meeting and several departments actually mentioned that. That the gentleman, the ambulance has been, they hear the ambulance all over town, all the time going out. So, and it's, 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 you know, it's what we talked about in past too. It's not just one time, go to the hospital, come back, another call. It's, it's multiple calls, it's, it's multiple, you know, times that two, two ambulances or sometimes even three ambulances are out, so. But we'll have all that information for you when, when we come forward sometime in the next, you know, what are we, in March, six months? Barbara?
Yeah, the, the only thing I hear that, talking about the ambulance before we leave that. The, it really depends on what Medicare program you have for coverage. If you have the basic, the usual, the old-fashioned one, yeah, it's, as you say. If you have an advantage program, which works like an HMO, PPO-type product, the deductible and the copays are different.
Right.
I think on my plan, my copay is like $350 for an ambulance ride. So.
Yeah.
So what, what I really wanted to talk about was the franchise fee. I have heartburn about the franchise fee. Ever since I learned what it was, three years ago, it's given me grief. Because I see it as another tax. And I know it pays for the media department, so I kind of like swallow it. But can we work out what the numbers would be if it was like 4% instead of 4.5%? I know that's not that big a difference probably to the per, to the folks out there with cable, but I, I just, I don't like it.
Going up a quarter percent, it's around $12,000.
Okay.
It's a third of that.
Yeah, well, I didn't want to do the math, I'm a nurse, I save lives, I don't do math.
What, what I looked at, why I put.
Except for meds.
That's different, that's minimums.
What, what, why I put the $51,000 there is because my example would be, $51,000 is a penny on the tax. Penny on, on. fifty-one thousand dollars is a penny on the tax, penny on, on, on the tax rate. On a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home, a penny is thirty dollars, three dollars, thirty dollars over a year. This, this increase would be basically a break-even for the cable user versus somebody with the tax rate. I am not saying that we should do this or not do this. I am just throwing it out there as an option right now. Um, I would really look at it as if we go in media, we change media totally. If we start going like, um, not to use another state, but as you go down south, they actually have programs and they broadcast every basketball game, every football game. They bring in special announcers that they pay for these games. And they know the players, and they know the players, and it's like you're watching, um, an NBC broadcast of a football game. And I don't think that's the way we want to really go right now. We, we are, we are providing a service of basketball games, baseball games, football games, hockey games on, on a, on a basis, and we have a lot of volunteers that enjoy doing the sports broadcasting. Down, down in these other communities, they actually have a whole sports wing of, in their media departments that just keep running it over and over and over again. And, and sometimes they get the local sports guy to come in and do the games for them, so. Um, and I don't see us going in that direction, so I really, at this time, unless we get a lot of people who cut the cord and, and cut Comcast, I think that might be a discussion that we, we see going on, because we will see our franchise fees go down. Right now, we're getting about ninety thousand dollars a quarter from them. If we see a significant drop off of that ninety thousand dollars, we'll know that we gotta, we gotta talk about something, because a lot of people are leaving Comcast and we, you know, what do we want to do? You know, the media department is, is a solid department, it's, it's really changed in the fifteen, seventeen years I've been here, than just, all right, let's just tape him, let's just tape the meeting and play the meeting the next day on, on the station to, to live broadcast, to, to the, to clip it, to, to the Merrimack emotion moments and things of that sort. So it really has morphed into it. And that would be a discussion the council would need to make, is that eventually we all knew that with the court cutting that this was gonna be a program that might have to be paid for through tax dol- subsidized through tax dollars.
Um, Barbara's thought about this being a tax increase by raising the franchise fee, and that's, I believe, I agree with you. But these all are indirectly, um, tax increases. Um, somebody's gonna be paying for it, and unless your contractor coming into town building the apartment buildings, it's, you know, it, um, you're building your house, it's all having a direct impact on those people. I always saw the franchise fees as a user fee for operating the cable system. People who had it were paying for what the services they could get by subscribing to Comcast. In the beginning, I never wanted to take the money out, I thought it should have been dedicated to that cause. And, uh, at some point, I don't remember when, I switched over and agreed, acquiesced to it, because it was a big pile of cash for a point of time. Uh, so now we're in that dilemma where it's, you know, it's thinning out potentially, and I think only because of the growth, um, you know, that'll salvage it for a couple more years, but, uh, it's a matter of time, and I don't know how to do it. I think we have to cut our reliance in some fashion on using it to offset the property tax, which of course is a tax increase, so, I don't know.
So in my opinion, I, I, I kind of agree with you guys, it is a tax. I, I definitely do not want to raise it. When we started this, our media division was basically broadcasting only on cable. And so the people that were paying for cable were paying for the services of the media, because they could see things. Today, that's not the case at all. You can see anything that these guys offer through multiple other channels than on cable, uh, with streaming and stuff. So now we're asking people to have cable to subsidize everybody else's access to the media department. And I, I think we've, um, just become very dependent upon the media department. For all the things that Paul's pointed out and everybody is pointing out that they offer, I don't see how we can raise the rates on the, on the cable subscribers, um, and to pay for the media anymore. I mean, if, if it was just being offered to cable, then that would be, which is the ration, that would be the people that would pay for it. And it would be, it would make sense to me, but I, so I can't, I can't go there at all. Ambulance billing? I, I, I was shocked when I was billed, when I dislocated my shoulder last year. I, I literally was shocked at what came across. And, uh, after we pay eight million dollars for the fire department, which is fire and ambulance, I, you, you, I, I just have to wonder, how come we're paying six, seven, eight hundred dollars for an ambulance ride, uh, that we use once or twice, you know, in a lifetime, usually? Now, you said there's frequent flyers, there are people that are abusing the system.
Yep, yep.
And I think we need to address that, we need to figure out how to handle that.
All right.
But I, you know, I've written in the ambulance in town once in the thirty years I've been here. And, you know, I've been paying for the fire department through my property taxes and stuff like that, having the ambulances, replacing the ambulances and stuff like that. So I feel like I'm being multiple billed when I get an extra bill, because I used this service one time. And, uh, it just, I, I have a real hard time raising the rates on that personally. But that's one of seven, so I mean, that's, that's where I sit with it. But thanks for bringing it up. Are there any other comments on option two? Nancy?
Uh, thank you. Um, Paul, just had a question about the, you said the different other towns, they have Medicare plus whatever, two-hundred percent or whatever. Um, so our, this billing that we have is just merely for the transportation piece, right?
Uh, trans- there, there, it's all rolled into, to one. It's, it's, uh, we do have an ALS and BLS for, for standard transportation, then we do in our billing rates.
Hold on a second, I can take it, it's a charge for treatments.
Well, that, that's what I was wondering, so...
You can get up, depend, it varies.
Right, so you could have a bill, and then on top of that, meds, fluids.
We, we do charge extra. There is a, a BLS emergency base rate, a BLS non-emergency base rate, an ALS emergency base rate, an ALS emergency two base rate. So it's, it's more sophisticated. Um, and then there's a mileage fee as well. Um, extra that we charge are for airway, cardiac monitor, defibrillators, uh, IV attempt, IV therapy, uh, mast and oxygen. And those rates haven't changed in ten years. Um, they've been a flat, whatever rate we were charging ten years ago, we, we still charge. Um, that's something that we, we've been doing for a while. Um, what we could do, as, when we bring this up, is, is look at those rates and maybe have them rolled into the BLS and ALS, those, those are in the Medicare rates, we can roll those in. But yes, there are some additional things that we do charge for, um, when, uh, on top of the, the regular standard for, four or five, uh, Medicare rates.
Yeah, I was just wondering if the other towns are including all that, so, you know what I mean? That, that's not a separate billing thing.
Right. We'll find all that out when we come forward. It was, like I said, this, option two is more of a discussion, get it out there, see how the council would feel about this stuff. And, and like I said, we have until six months from now to come forward and, and make these changes if, if need be. And, um, but I'm just bringing this forward, because it's, it's something the council needs to look at when we're, when we're looking at the rates. And to Nancy, to, to respond to you, my dad was in town forty-five years. He used the ambulance once in those forty-five years, and maybe going back over his life, I can think maybe two other times that he may have, that I've take, I took him to the hospital, or my mom drove him to the hospital when I was, couldn't drive yet, that, that he was there. And one time he drove himself, so, you know, which, don't ask. You know, but that, that, that was, that was the way the people were brought up, you know? So, uh, but yeah, you're right, it's, it's not that you do use the ambulance. Some people use it more frequently when they're sick, and that's what it's there for, it is there for that. And if you need it, call, please call. And I guess that's the last thing I want to say about this, is that if you, if you're having a medical emergency, call the ambulance. Don't worry, oh, I can't afford the bill. Call the ambulance, we'll figure out the billing and if you can afford it or not on the backend. These guys are trained professionals that are, they're excellent at their job, and they will help you. Call them. If you need the ambulance, call them, they will come.
Nancy?
Just to respond to your, the point, Tom. I understand what you're saying, it's, it's like, it's like having the dump, and you're paying someone to empty your trash, and you've already paid for it, it's that kind of a thing. Which is probably a poor correlation or analogy, but anyway. As I just crap myself. But anyway, um, if you wanted to go really straight arrow with that, and say, we're already paying for the ambulance, then the difference that we're not getting from the insurance is most of it, we'd have to pay in tax rate. So we would not be paying extra, because as a resident, but we would be paying extra. Do you understand what I'm saying? Because we'd be making up for what we don't get.
I realize it's a complex situation.
And all ambulances, no matter where they are, are extremely expensive. So I do agree with you, and yes, it would be shocking to anybody, but it wouldn't matter where you are, it would be. It's extremely, it's worse. I was gonna say, six or seven, that surprises me, I would think, poor a thousand, but, and it doesn't make it right, I'm just saying that. And I think part of it is, it is paid...
Well, maybe that was the part I owed, after, I don't remember what the numbers were, but...
But I think part of it is, it is paid by insurance, whether it be Medicare or whether it be regular insurances. It's the difference, it's that over, and how much you have to come out extra to the person, that certainly is open for discussion. But I mean, I understand your point, we're already paying for it, but we're gonna be paying more if we don't take the supplement that we get.
We can take the supplement, the question is how much extra do you charge? Is it a hundred percent above Medicare, is it two-hundred percent, is it, you know, is it fifty percent?
And could you separate, because insurances will pay more than Medicare.
Yeah, but it...
No, most use...
I mean, just to say that insurance pays it, somebody's paying insurance, so...
Oh, I understand, but it's still a supplement that's available to us, and why would we not take advantage of it to help decrease the taxes? There's two sides to that coin. And yes, as a taxpayer, I pay for my insurance.
So now we're, now we're, but anyway.
I have insurance coverage, but right now, it would cost me a fortune to take an ambulance. And at the end of the month, when I'm supposed to be on the Medicare thing, all of a sudden, it's almost a free ride, so, that's...
I know.
It's crazy.
It's very complex.
And by the way, I don't even remember what the mileage charge is, and I'm not gonna ask you, because I don't want to terrify everybody. But that's crazy too, by, just the, you know, the mileage charge is a lot of dough.
Twelve dollars and three cents a mile.
Yep.
Twelve dollars and...
Yep, and that's, that's cheap. And that's cheap from another one that I saw. One was twenty-five dollars a mile in another town, twenty-five dollars a mile.
Well, you're sending out specialized equipment.
With the IRS deductions.
Okay, Laun.
Here's a question.
I'm sorry.
Is there a, is there a profile, or is there enough data available to build a profile that would show what Nancy's talking about in terms of support from insurance? And the, um, you know, the, the frequency of use by age group, by whatever, is there... I mean, the town has a history of dealing with ambulance costs.
Correct.
And I guess what I'm asking, if, is it possible to have some kind of graphic or some kind of data, pie, call it pie chart, call it whatever you want, that would at least help this counselor understand the use and who, who becomes most impacted in terms of cost? Insurance, no insurance, Medicare eligibility, not whatever.
To be perfectly honest with you, I haven't, do not know. Um, we use a third-party biller, and I'm sure that I can ask those questions. And when we do, if we do, bring this forward to the council later on this summer, we'll have those questions answered in, in the presentation.
I agree with you, I think that's the missing link for me, is that, give us examples. If you had a sixty-five-year-old who was on Medicare versus sixty-five who had insurance, what would that person end up paying out of their pocket or something? That would help me as well.
And, and I think we, we can do that, because I believe that, uh, ComStar has those. Because ComStar has the, the, every, they get, if, if, if the insurance company, if they were, had insurance and they, they billed it through the insurance company, if it was written off because of deductible, then we'd have, they have that information, so I would hope that they could get that for us. But I can talk to, to ComStar and see what kind of reports we can get when we... It sounds like you might want to hear more about this later on? And, okay.
Just a thought for you as you're researching this, um, you might want to ask ComStar, you said you hadn't changed the rates for certain procedures in route, uh, in ten years. So you may want to ask them, what is, you know, the southern New Hampshire going rate for those same procedures? Just to make sure. Because we, some of the supplies we buy and some of, they load the truck when they're at the ER, so it just depends.
A lot, a lot of that, uh, yes, if the ER has those supplies.
Right, and if we don't, we have to order it ourselves. My other thought is also check into what happens for billing in other towns and, and cities regarding the non-transport costs. So when, in my day as an EMT, we billed for those. Now, the, granted, that was, you know, a number of years ago, but still, we billed for those, because you still had to deploy equipment, you still had to send the truck out. So there's, it's like a base charge, they don't get, you know, the, the, whatever the rate is, but maybe it's a, a different charge. Anyhow, something to think about.
Right, and I think, uh, it's only two years old in the state of New Hampshire. I think we only got approval from, for the last couple of years for non-transport being able to bill. There was some talk, it, we don't, we don't, but I think that it only came into effect in the state of New Hampshire a couple of years ago, with the non-transport. Um, actually, well, let's see. It was when Chief Curry was here, so what's that, almost two, two, two and a... Yeah, nineteen, so about two, two and a half years ago. Yeah, so, um, on the last slide, the, I got once, unless, we're, are we done? Sorry, didn't mean to jump the gun there. But, um, what I wanted to show is, because I showed you that the fund would be about forty-two, forty-three thousand dollars in the hole, but by using option one, which was the increase in, in the, the current use and, and the ambulance, and then the two, uh, the two licenses, the restaurant and the building permits, we would be able to come up and put nine thousand dollars into the fund, and the balance would go to nine, one, be a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. So the fund would start being able to grow again over the next few years. Right, but it's better than... Right. Correct. And, and knowing that in the fu- you know, as it goes in the future. We've been collecting around that three-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars a year for the last two or three years. So that's, that's a good figure there, so. But I just wanted to show you that, and then any, any questions. But the, the last point I'll make, and I'll be quiet then, is that, yes, we looked at it, we came up with, Counselor Hunter asked about this. When we were looking at it, we saw that there was a problem. You let me come back with, with a solution. And, and the solution is, is that we can cover that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars without adding to the taxes. So it would still be, uh, the same amount of money, um, for that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from media would just be spread out in a couple of different areas. Um, and I looked at, had made them look at all their revenues to make sure that we were on. And if there was a revenue that they said we weren't gonna hit, let me know. And everybody right now says the revenues, they feel comfortable with the revenue amounts. Even Diane was a little wary about the car registrations, but the used cars are ridiculous, ridiculous, what they're getting for a used car. And if anybody buys a GMC pickup truck, GMC Sierra pickup truck I saw the other day was sixty-eight thousand dollars for the base model, for the pickup truck. And they're selling used pickup trucks for fifty thousand dollars. For, um, so, you know, the, the, that's where we're having our... for $50,000. For, so, you know, the, the, that's where we're having our, we're seeing our money, that $5 million that we've put in for auto registrations. When we say we're, we're still good, it's because you, the used market, used car market is up. And once the chips come in, I don't see new car prices dropping drastically, unless, unless interest rates go sky high and, yeah. Yeah. Right. So, I, I, there's, I looked like a bug flying around up there, or was it my watch? I don't know this. I'm sorry. Caught my eye. I'm like... Okay. Thank you. Of course, I left my paperwork in the other office. I want to say, I want to thank the Teamsters, Local 633 for coming and negotiating. And actually, we do have a tentative agreement with, with, with the Teamsters 633. And I think I'm gonna frame this, because this is the first one as, me as being a town manager. I've been involved in other negotiations, but this is my first one. Yeah. So I'm gonna put this on my wall or something. But, yeah, exactly. But we did come to a tentative agreement with, with Teamsters Local 633. Local 633 is the supervisors of the DPW group, which are supervisors and secretaries in wastewater, equipment maintenance, solid waste and highway. Some of the cost items for this contract, it's a two-year contract, increasing life insurance benefits for spouse, increase from 1,000 to 10,000, and children benefit from 500 and 100 to $5,000. Wages in the first year, 2022, 23, 2.5% increase with an additional 48 cents an hour, shall be added to the base hourly rate for employees effective the first pay period in 2022, 23. And then in fiscal year 23, 24, 3%. And then we also had something where employees to, that are on call during a holiday would be paid an extra two hours of on-call pay at their base salary rate. And prescription eyewear, the town will provide $125 for prescription safety glasses, once every three years, beginning July 2022. The cost in the first year of this contract is $49,754, or approximately one cent on the tax rate. And the costing year two is $35,555. It's a little less than one cent on the tax rate in year two. Any questions? Yes.
I'd like to ratify the tentative agreement with Teamsters Local 633 and vote to move this agreement to the warrant.
Second.
Second.
Is that all you need, Paul?
Yes, that, that'll work. Yes.
Any other comments or questions?
I guess just with thanks to the union, I appreciate them stepping to the plate, and I'm glad we were able to come to a conclusion.
And I, I was remiss. I want to thank Sharon Marunich, HR Director, who sat there at those negotiations with me and kept me in line and made sure. But...
Held your hand.
Kicked me under the table, make sure I wasn't doing anything that I wasn't supposed to do. But she, she is part of, she was a, a key member of, of our, our negotiating team. And actually, she's done, she did a lot of work in making sure that we knew what proposals we were talking about and, and how, where in the contract things were and what we were talking about. So I want to thank her very much for her help and efforts. Yep.
Okay. It, it sounds like it is a good agreement. We appreciate the effort that both the town staff and the, the union staff have put into, come into an agreement. It's always good to finally get an agreement together that we can present to the town at the vote. It will be tentatively agreed to by us, but we're moving it to the warrant, so that it needs to be finally agreed by, by the town during the April vote. So if there's no other comments, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining, that passes 7-0-0. So we're tentatively agreed on both sides for the 633 contract.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you.
That brings us to comments from the press or the public. Comments from the council? Seeing none?
Seeing none, I make a motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned by Lon Wood, seconded by Barbara Healy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One hour, that's, that's it.
You guys are getting good at it.
We had a half-hour planning board meeting the other day.
Really?
Really?